Call the meeting to order while the clerk please call the call.
Yay.
Here.
Kurt.
Excused.
Cindy.
Here.
Eric.
Here.
Mark.
Here.
Bob.
Excused.
Nancy.
Yes.
Okay, there we have a quorum. There's five out of the seven assembly members here today. It's now time for the voluntary pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You don't want me tripping over anything and falling.
You have a booby trap over there?
Yes, he did.
Terrible.
He's lucky I didn't throw it out the window.
Oh, okay. Well, on with the meeting. Okay, entertain a motion for approval of minutes. I don't see any dates there, but from the past meetings.
There are no minutes, I'm sorry. No minutes available for approval at this time.
Okay, that's why there's nothing listed, aren't there?
Are there no notes there? It should say there's...
Not on mine.
Okay.
Okay, item four, entertain a motion to approve today's meeting agenda or amend as necessary. So moved.
I'll second.
Okay. Any changes for today's agenda or move forward like it is? Seeing no hands coming up, we'll accept the meeting agenda as presented to us. There are no public hearings listed today, no bid awards. Is there any visitors in the audience with views related to items on today's agenda? Please come forward, state your name and who you represent.
Hi, I'm speaking to the mental health trust lands situation. My name is Becky Knight, and I speak on behalf of myself. Last Wednesday, I submitted a draft resolution to the city clerk that addresses the Alaska Mental Health Trust situation. The draft supports a cash buyout of the AMHT using as a template Senator Murkowski's proposed legislation for exactly that approach used with Shiatica Inc.'s surface land holdings at Cube Cove on Admiralty Island. The mayor and vice mayor declined addition of the resolution to the agenda asserting that such action would need additional time to get fleshed out and negotiated, and that it is unlikely to happen within the timeframe AMHT has proposed, so doesn't appear to achieve a more desirable outcome. I respectfully disagree with that conclusion. Murkowski and AMHT could mutually agree to change the action of the bill to an endowment instead of a land exchange, which would greatly improve its chances of passage by reducing or even eliminating opposition. Given its fair chance of passage, as demonstrated by the Shiatica buyout, which has already achieved partial success, AMHT could actually finalize the action much sooner. They required up to one-year time under Senate Bill 3006 to survey and appraise the lands, plus more time to get them logged directly and exactly addresses the reason AMHT issued the threat, that is, lack of time. With the endowment approach, only half the surveys and appraisals would be involved, since only the AMHT lands would be included, not for service land. According to an op-ed by Trust Board Chair Russ Webb, an exchange through an administrative process could cost the trust as much as $6 million. The cost of a legislative exchange would likely be similar. An endowment is the most timely and least costly alternative to the trust and could easily be inserted into your letter as Plan B while still preserving support of Senate Bill 3006 if quick agreement to pursue an endowment can be reached between the senator and AMHT. There would be no harm in this approach and may in fact be a wise course while providing Senator Murkowski some encouragement to consider that change, that is, if AMHT is willing. Such an alternative would require no dependence on the timber industry, whether they exist or not, at the time otherwise scheduled to log, and would result in no environmental harm. It makes fiscal sense also because it would cost the trust roughly only half the above $6 million, and that's because just AMHT lands would be involved. Also, a request for public hearings could also be inserted since the legislation is not guaranteed to pass January 15th, and local folks need an opportunity. Given Senator Sullivan's opinion that it is highly unlikely Congress will be able to pass the legislation in time, it is important to have another option to ensure that AMHT does not begin logging local community uplands. The endowment alternative is a good Plan B for all involved, and is actually better and less risky than Plan A. All it requires is the combined tool of Senator Murkowski and AMHT, and judging by the already success and progress of the Shiatica situation, it could very well happen. As a friend put it to me, "Apparently, the trust asserts it is their fiduciary responsibility to log timber even when it damages a neighbor's property and even when landslides are triggered." This take-no-prisoners' policy intimidates landowners who have fewer legal resources to accept a lopsided exchange just to avoid damages they should not have suffered in the first place. Finally, we should not show indifference to the fate of the potential exchange lands that AMHT plans to log on Prince of Wales and Revilla Islands. Everywhere is someone's backyard. If this is the model they adopt in full view, what will they do behind the scenes? Thank you.
Thank you, Becky. Any other visitors in the audience with views related to items on the agenda? Margie, did you have something?
My name is Marg Oynas, and I'm speaking for myself and whoever else agrees with me. I would like to speak to the ordinance that you're looking at today, number 201611, on the last page, page seven, where it says that the excise taxes collected for marijuana will be deposited into the borough's property development fund. And then, the purpose of the fund is to purchase and develop rehabilitation or improvement of real property owned by the municipality and for the administration of real property transactions. I would like that to be changed, to read that half of these taxes go for that purpose, and the other half goes to a fund that is set aside exclusively for the care and treatment of people who suffer from abuse of drug and alcohol, to include marijuana. And the reasons why I'm asking for that is that I wrote a letter to the editor in the August 4th pilot, and they titled it, "Do, let's see, Do Less Harm?" And one of the testimonies that I wrote about in that article is that Dr. Thurston from Colorado had to double the size of his treatment center, or double his staff, because once Colorado okayed the use of marijuana, there were quite an increase of people who came to see him, mostly youth. But it's no secret that once alcohol was okay, plenty of people under the age of 21 or 18, whatever it is, get a hold of alcohol and abuse it. And I can see that that possibility will occur if marijuana should be used, I mean, if we vote and say yes to the sale of marijuana in our borough. And so, just because of that, I'd like to see that some of that money go to their care and treatment. And the other reason is that funding is being decreased for everything, for mental health here in Petersburg. They're struggling to get money just to keep mental health going. So, the money could either be, 50% could go to Petersburg Mental Health to be used for the treatment of those who suffer from or abuse marijuana. So that's why I'm asking that you consider and do that.
Okay, thank you, Marg. This is just the first reading, and the second reading will have wording changed by our attorney.
Okay.
On how we can tax it and how we can't tax it. So, and then during the second reading, and maybe if we have more public, maybe another public hearing. There'll be definitely a public hearing during the second.
So then, I should come and say the same thing?
Probably. I don't know if there'll be any changes today to the way it's worded.
Okay, but if you could consider that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other visitors in the audience with views related to today?
Mr. Mayor, Assemblymembers, I'd like to, I'm speaking for, I'm David Beebe, I'm speaking on behalf of myself, and I'd like to address the letter regarding the Alaska Mental Health Trust. The borough letter rightly acknowledges the threats that Alaska Mental Health Trust is issuing. These threats, however, are not just limited to the Ketchikan and Petersburg boroughs. These are threats to public safety, in our citizens' homes, and private property, our local economy, their highways, and other public and private infrastructure, their peace of mind, their quality of life, or even their inability to get landslide insurance for their homes should the trust lock those unstable slopes. After all, the trust's ultimatum is unequivocal. There is no alternative. And the trust deputy director is on record stating, quote, "This is not a game of chicken," close quote. Rather, the trust seeks to obtain money, property, or services from an institution through force or threats. With all due respect, Mayor and Assemblymembers, that is the definition of extortion, and we are now facing a hostage crisis. The terms of the ransom note have been penned by Senator Murkowski in the form of land-exchange legislation. But what if the legislation fails to pass? Does the letter actually deal with the threats? The mayor's letter accepts the terms of the ransom note, and by doing so, fails its citizens at the most basic level of government, which is an expectation to be free from the predicament of constant, no-alternative threats issued by a state corporation executing an economic policy of funding government services through revenues derived through unsustainable resource extraction at all costs. That same economic orthodoxy has indisputably failed our borough, our state, and our nation, as Laskins face a $3 billion deficit in the funding of the most basic functions of government. There is no shortage of irony here. Mental illness is defined as a condition which causes a serious disorder in a person's behavior or thinking. The economic orthodoxy which imposes these failures is itself a serious disorder which must be addressed. The borough's letter implicitly sanctions an indisputably unsustainable extraction-at-all-costs policy, whether it's old-growth forests, oil, coal, or gas. There is no question, the extraction itself will indisputably accelerate irreversible and catastrophic climate disruption, sea level rise, ocean warming, and ocean acidification. Our billion-dollar commercial fishing industry can be added to this hostage list, as the 2016 COHO management report attests to the northern half of southeast Alaska being largely closed to climate change. The fact is, is we have a problem. A necessary step towards the solution of any problem is being clear about addressing the cause of the problem rather than merely the symptoms. The letter is accepting the terms of extortion and does not address the cause of the problem. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Is there any other people in the audience with views related to items on today's agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to the next item. What was the next one? Okay, Bill, sorry about that.
I was hiding. Bill Tremblay, just representing myself, speaking on the Mental Health Trust letter that you've drafted. I support the law that's drafted, as it points out. A lot of information, we already know, that we'd like to encourage some type of action rather than having Mental Health harvest those areas. One of the things that I'd like to encourage you to attach to the letter is previous information that we collected about 10 years ago when it was discussed about the mental health logging up there, where we had good information from experts regarding landslides. And make sure that that's very apparent to whoever is new on the Mental Health Board, that that information is out there and available, and people know about this. It's not just a casual document, as it was like one of the foremost landslide experts in the Forest Service to provide this information, so it should have some good standing. The other thing I'd suggest is also attaching in the last decade, I know that we've had some events out there, it'd be nice to highlight those current events. Six Mile has, I think, state has been out there fixing that two or three times in the last decade because of landslides going across the highway there. You have the incident that happened out at Don Keening's place as well. Those are current events within the last decade that they should be aware of. I don't support tying this in any way to an equivalent of what's happening in Cube Cove. What's happened with the Forest Service and the native corporations' lands is apples and oranges. What's happening in Cube Cove is actually something that's been started in discussion with ANXHA, continued in ANLCA, and you've got specific section in ANLCA, Section 506, that dealing with Admiralty Island exchanges, having to, actually putting money forward to encouraging the dialogue and to resolve that for fair market value for how that is going to be resolved. We don't have that with mental health. Mental health is a state-caused problem in that they didn't provide adequate support to mental health to begin with. Mental health got the scraps, and they're still trying to deal with what they have for opportunities. I fault them for their approach at this point, but I know the situation that they're in, and I would say that the letter that you have, plus some good examples of what's been happening in that hillside unraveling, should make everybody aware of what the situation is out there and the concerns we have for the community members out in that direction. So, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Bill. The document you're talking about adding to this letter is something, analysis of the slope performed by a landslide expert? Do we have that? We must have access to that.
I don't know. Ed has it.
I will look for it.
Okay, well, he says he has it.
And then regarding the state activities, it's probably not so much to go into the cost of what they've had to do out there, but the number of times that they've gone out to do that work, because I'm sure that's well documented as well.
Right. Well, we could insert that along with the letter if it gets approved, as written.
Okay, thank you.
Is that okay with the assembly?
Yeah.
Okay, any other visitors in the audience with views related to items on today's agenda? Okay, I don't see any hands going up, so we'll move on to visitors' views unrelated to items on today's agenda. Any visitors in the audience with...
So, since my cross on the iPads, when you get to this thing, there's comments you can read them, because you're not getting them.
Oh, okay.
Comments for each thing.
Sounds good. All right, thanks.
Sorry about that.
Okay, is there anybody in the audience with views unrelated to items on today's agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move forward. Board commission and committee reports, there are none today. Assistant has one on. There's no items there. No items under consent agenda, and that brings us to report of other officers, and that brings us to the mayor's report. Fairly brief. First thing on the report is historic canny labels featured in Alaska Airlines Alaska Beyond magazine. Page 30 of the September issue of Alaska Beyond magazine showcases a few of Karen Hofstadts' historic canny labels with an interesting article about Alaska cannerys and Karen's effort, with the help of a few sponsors. It displays some history of the industry that built Petersburg by supplying public refuse cans with prints of the old canny labels on them. The cans are bright and interesting, an artistic asset to Petersburg. Thank you, Karen, and all of her helpers for your efforts. Next item on the report is candidates for October 4th, 2016 election. The clerk's office received 15 declarations of candidacy forms for our October election. There were no declarations of candidacy for the following seats: School Board, one seat, three-year term; Hospital Board, three seats of three-years terms; Public Safety Board, one seat, and that's a two-year term. A qualified borough resident who wishes to run for office as a write-in candidate may file a letter of intent form with the borough's, with the clerk's office no later than 5:00 p.m. on Friday, September 30th, 2016. Write-in candidate letter of intent forms are available at the front desk of the finance office, or can be printed from the borough's website at www.petersburgak.gov. If you have any questions, you can contact Clerk Debbie Thompson at 772-5405. Please, if you're interested, submit your name. Seeking community input on state dock issues. The state of Alaska has offered to transfer ownership of the Papkies Landing Dock, the Cooperoff Dock, and the Entrance Island Dock to the Petersburg Borough, along with a lump sum payment of $732,883. That's to go towards deferred maintenance. The condition assessments were recently performed. That estimates the cost of just to bring the Papkies Landing Dock to a safe and usable condition at $1,050,000, and $1,395,000 to bring the Cooperoff Dock up to standards. The Borough Assembly is still seeking input from the community regarding acceptance or denial of the state's offer. A questionnaire on the issue is available for printing off the borough's website, or it can be picked up at the borough office, or from the city of Cooperoff clerk, or from the Papkies Landing Public Notice Board. Alaska Department of Transportation, excuse me, and Public Facilities has given the borough a deadline of December 31st, 2016 to accept the transfer. The plan is to address this issue after the October municipal election, so I'm sure that will be an interesting topic. Notice of proposed issuance of an Alaska pollutant discharge elimination system general permit. The Alaska Department of Environmental Conservation is planning to reissue a general permit for discharges from the application of pesticides, as the current permit issued by the EPA in 2011 expires on October 31st of this year. Public comments will be accepted until October 3rd of 2016, and may be sent to the Alaska Department of Environmental Conservation. Oh, then I'll mess up the guy's last name. Jim Prakima, I guess, 555 Cordova Street, Anchorage, Alaska, 99501, 907-334-2288 is the phone number, or you could email him at his address for the correct spelling of that. You could look on our agenda or get it from the clerk. Another reminder, Southeast Conference is going to be, the annual membership meeting will be here in Petersburg, September 20th through the 22nd. And I looked at the agenda, it looks like there'll be some interesting topics on there, ferry schedules, and just the whole makeup of the ferry system. So, information about the meeting can be found at www.southeastconference.org. And that is my report, and I will move to the manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We continue to have waitlists at Admiralty Housing and Assisted Land Facilities, so, good news there. The Medicaid Provider Certification Renewal has been submitted for the matter. This is really important. A lot of our folks up there take advantage of that, and we have to go through that certification every so often. It has been submitted, and we'll, should have no problems with getting that back. The municipal building project continues to move forward. Initial installation on the jail cells has been completed, and the block wall for the detention area is done. They're getting ready to, they're framing up for where the windows are going to go. The roof is complete, and all the in-ground work on Phase 1 is complete. So, and then all the stub outs for electric and water sewer are in place. So, framing upstairs, I think, is almost done. Framing downstairs is complete. So, anyway, coming along really well. We should start seeing a lot more, looking a little bit less like a bombed-out We have had a couple of resignations in the police department. Officer Kent Preston resigned effective 8/28/2016 due to a family medical issue. Kent was active in officiating athletic events at school functions and volunteered on various community projects around town. He will be missed, and we wish him the best. Is the other one official as well? Okay. Officer Corey Rowley has accepted a position up in Yakatah, and will also be leaving us, and so we will miss both of them. Sergeant Holgreen applied for Homeland Security Grant to continue with our communications upgrades in the PD and Fire Department. We were awarded $43,700 for the purpose of updating radios in fire EMS and police vehicles. Since 2014, we've received just over $272,000 from the efforts of Sergeant Holgreen and from Homeland Security, so thanks to him. After our search warrant applications will now be handled by the Anchorage Magistrates. We're not yet sure if this will affect local service, but Kelly will keep us in the loop if it does. We are preparing for the community center closure, which will be between September 12th through the 23rd. This is for the Alaska Parks and Recreation Association, who will be having their annual conference here that first week, and then Southeast Conference will be using the facilities the second week. During this timeframe, all facilities will be closed for use to the public, so we can facilitate those two conferences. Community Expo is Thursday, September 15th, from 5 to 9. We invite the community to come out and join us for the evening. There are vendors selling goods of all types, including arts, crafts, and jewelry, clothes, tupperware, and food. Free activities open to the community include the bounce house, climbing wall, spike ball, and mini golf. Youth Basketball League is open for registration. We are searching for volunteers, including coaches, referees, timers, and scorekeepers. Please seek, talk to Heidi Cabral if you need more information. Fall schedule hours at the facility have now begun. There's a change to the midday swim schedule, and the warm therapy pool will be open from 11 to 12, while lap swims available from 11:30 to 12:45. Chandler met with Susan Harae about the progression on the Hungry Point Trail. A projection on completion lies sometime in the summer of 2017. Just kind of shout out to Janet Holton for all of her work keeping us on track for the grant, and working in conjunction with PIA, Janet and Sue have produced some match hours that needed to submit the pay request to DNR for the Hungry Point Trail grant. So, helps us when we can account for all of those extra hours, means less cash out of our pockets, out of PIA's pockets for that matter, who's helping us maintain all those. Rainforest Festival will be held September 8th through the 11th. The library is a partner in this annual event, and many sessions are held there at the library, so look into it if you're interested. We did have a bike stolen from outside the library. Week of Friday, thanks to Sergeant Holgreen for a quick response in starting the process of finding out who's stealing children's bicycles. The Drive Down Bulkhead Construction Project is running on schedule. The sheet pile has been installed. The area is now getting backfilled and packed into place. Contractors done a nice job of maintaining access to the drive-down float and the storage area, although we do apologize, we understand it's an inconvenience to have lots of equipment and stuff over there. It's the price we pay for getting this one done. South Harbor Bullwell Replacement Project is going well. D-Float is about complete, and Sandy's working with Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Management regarding their visit. We'll have, the earthquake simulator will be here in town from September 6th through the 10th. I believe that will be set up at the school. Training and tabletop exercise for staff members and other... Training and tabletop exercise for staff members and other folks will be at the Fire Hall tomorrow, and then the Community Emergency Preparedness Fair on September 10th from 10 to 2 at the fire station, and we'll have to go back on the earthquake simulator, whether it's at the school or at the Fire Hall. So apologize for that. Fire hose pressure testing has begun. Equipment testing and maintenance is in progress, and Ryan's working on the details for the pump testing on all the apparatus that we have to make sure they meet code and are holding pressure. Useless abatement action at 106 Ira 2 has been canceled. The property owner has complied with the request to clear the lot. It's been an ongoing thing for several years, and thanks to Liz and Joe and various other folks who helped make sure that that got completed and done. Our Planning Commission's next meeting is scheduled for September 27th at 2:30 PM. Despite the slow salmon season, the cold storage actually had a pretty good summer with nearly a million pounds running through the cold storage facility. Believe the majority of that from Ocean Beauty. Children's Center has received its provisional license to operate starting September 1st. The new license allows the center to care for up to 64 children, an increase of 23, thanks to the Rotary Club and Search for their support of the project and Nordic Electric for donating their time to the project, as well as all the volunteers. Assemblymember Lynn and Wohler, who spent lots of time up there helping, so everybody that did help deserves our thanks and congratulations. Public Works Staff continues to touch up the road shoulders, driveway connections, and side street aprons, following the paving, some of the Borough streets by C-CON. The new garbage truck to replace the existing, our largest one, has been ordered. The replacement, which was approved in the FY17 budget, will eliminate the maintenance issues we've been having with the aging number three and provide a smaller, more maneuverable truck that fits better the Borough's current garbage and recycling collection strategies. C-CON has finished the Nordic and Haugen projects. It's possible they will do some more paving here next spring if the plant is still in town and there's enough local business to justify starting it up. It is being wintered here, but again, no guarantee that it'll be brought back operational, but we'll keep an eye on it. Concrete crews still working on the Hammer Sluice Bridge and a few other items. They expect to be finished this week, I believe. We, there's an agenda item for the Assembly to look at, but we're currently starting the process of refinancing some bonds, what's called refunding. It's not a huge savings, but we'll take what we can get due to interest rate changes. The bonds involved are for the Aquatic Center in the South Harbor, probably anywhere from five to 15,000 dollars a year savings in payments. Kind of depends on what happens with the interest rate between now and the time that it's finalized, so Jody's working on that. And property taxes are due September 30th, for those of you who needed to know, and that's it.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Any questions of the manager on his report?
Well, not so much the manager, a little aim toward glow. I was just curious about the, some of the new remodels that have been happening down in South Harbor and, and kind of just what Steve had talked about, about the, the drive-down bulkhead. I was just curious about that, and I bet a lot of folks would be interested to hear about what's going on with that.
Yeah, it's very exciting. They're on schedule. They're supposed to be done, contract says November 30th. I think they'll probably be done closer to the end of September. It's going well. They're backfilling, tamping it all down so it does it. The way that the bulkhead will work is almost like a pumpkin, where those sheet pile will engage with the pressure of the fill, and it comes together, locks in place, and then we'll sit and watch it for two weeks to see it kind of do its thing. And when it's, once it's fully engaged and it stops moving, then they'll come back and finish by putting a fender pile system out in front, so you'll actually be able to tie your boat up to and use it. So that's really exciting. It's all dredged to a minus 16, so all our boats can get to the face of it. So appreciate your, you know, your work in, in giving that whole project funded, because it's going to be a really nice addition. Then it'll all get put back together and we'll be able to operate the uplands as we were before. So I know that'll be music to a lot of people's ears because of long-term parking, so. And then the other stuff in the South Harbor, the portion of the facility that was built in 1984, some of the bull rails, we did a lot in 2000 where we came through and did a big upgrade with the electrical and the support foundation with the, with the styrofoam billets that were added in 2000. And so we did a nice upgrade then. Now we're just doing another kind of phase, and we're doing it all in-house. So we bought the materials with the budget, and the boys have just been going through and putting in new bull rails on D-Float, and now we're moving over to C-Float and going to do some work on the, we moved four of the floats that were from the old, old Middle Harbor, the 1970 Middle Harbor when we demoed that, and that was used as portion of the, of C-Float, and so we're just doing a little remodel on some of that stuff, so. Yeah, so just trying to keep ahead of it.
Looks like it's coming along.
Yeah, yeah. My guys are really on top of it, so.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions of the manager? Anybody? I've got one question about the search warrants. I guess it might be for the chief. Is this basically another State's cost-saving measure, and can you foresee any delays?
I think it is part of their cost-saving efforts. It's something that they've tried before, although the local courts have supported us in those after-hours applications. There are some differences in practices. For instance, the local court and some of the officers here prefer to give that search warrant testimony in the application process orally. Anchorage is going to want it in a written format most times, so guys are going to have to come in from the field, type up a search warrant application, send it to Anchorage, and we're going to get in line with their caseload, the rest of the State's caseload. Here, when we have those concerns after hours, we're the only game in town, so they get handled pretty quickly. So there's going to be a little change of pace there, way we do business, and we're going to get placed in those queues to wait our turn.
Yes, we'll just have to see how it all shakes out on it.
Hopefully, you know, we've gotten some guidance from the district attorney in Juneau, and hopefully the, the judicial officers up in Anchorage realize that we do things just a little bit differently down here, and we can reach a compromise so it doesn't delay things too long.
Okay, well, thank you. Now I think we'll take a five-minute break. So roughly, fortified again, we'll start the meeting, and we're under unfinished business, and there is none. So the next item on the agenda is new business. The first item under that is Ordinance 2016-11. An ordinance amending Borough Code for Providing for a New Chapter 4.70 to Impose Excise Taxes on the Cultivation, Manufacturing, and Retail Sale of Marijuana and Any Marijuana Product. I'd entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance in its first reading.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Member Strand, seconded by Member Logadakis to adopt Ordinance 2016-11 in its first reading discussion. Debbie, would you explain what the, or Steve, the Borough Attorney had said?
If I may. The way the ordinance is currently written, we'll have to make some changes to. Basically, the, the Assembly can elect to implement an excise tax, which is basically on the production of marijuana or, from a, you know, the raw plant or from a standpoint of the edibles or something like that. That's okay, does not need to go to the voters. So for example, if someone was growing marijuana, it was a licensed facility, we can tax what they produce. The State statute is very clear about them having, keeping very good records. So they grow, you know, five pounds of marijuana, they're going to pay an excise tax on that. What is, also in there was the sale of it from a cultivator to a retail store. That we cannot do without approval of the voters. So at this point, what we're seeking is some guidance from the Assembly. If you want to have that still in there, then we're going to have to do something else as far as schedule a vote or put it on the next election. We can change that and delete that section and just go with the excise tax for now, and then come back later if the Assembly wanted to. So again, the way the current ordinance reads, it's having an excise tax and also a tax on the sale from the cultivator to the retail store. That component is considered a sales tax and must be approved by voters if you go that route.
That's a good question. Sure.
So for the sake of argument, we take out the tax on the retail and the 50 cents per gram tax. We were so inclined, we could revisit this in the spring so that there wouldn't need to be, we'll just go on the general ballot next fall for the sake of argument.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion on that topic? So is, do we want to modify the wording at this point, or?
Strike the, the retail language?
Right.
Yeah, I would, so I would move that we amend the ordinance to strike the language regarding retail tax. Does that work?
Yes.
What section?
It is.
I'll find it.
Thank you. And then for the sake of discussion, we need a second on the motion to.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. So let's find where that's at, and we could get the proper wording, or that'll just be removed. I remember reading that.
Well, the truth is, it's most likely going to be removed. Anyway, I appreciate the motion, but the attorney is rewording this to make it more correct, so when you get it in the next packet on the 19th, it will be different wording, and that tax will not be there because we cannot have it in.
We don't need the amendment, then.
Tax, correct.
Okay, so we'll just vote on the ordinance in its current form, and when we get word from the attorney on the proper language for it, we'll.
Delve into it further.
The second reading.
Yes.
And we'll have a public hearing as well, so the public can comment. So any other discussion? Go ahead, Cindy.
I, I actually liked Marjorie's proposal that some of that money go towards some kind of medical or mental health purpose, and I would like, unless there was a compelling reason not to do so, to add that language that would allocate some of that money either to the hospital or to mental health treatment and put it as up to 50%, so it wasn't a hard and fast number. We could flex that number, but it would give us that flexibility to allocate money towards things that were alcohol, drug, and health-related.
Okay, should we, I don't see any reason why that wouldn't be acceptable.
Agreed.
Right, so would you, is that a motion?
Do we need a motion, or?
We can do it any reading.
Okay, then I would move that we would change the provision for the proceeds going to the Property Development Fund to say that half of that money would be available for allocation to health and mental health costs without designating a specific.
Organization.
Organization.
So you want the wording up to 50%?
Up to 50%.
And that decision will be made at the time of dispersment of those funds by the Assembly or by the?
At budget time, yes.
Okay.
Ask a, okay. Two things. One's just about that, the way I read it, and I'm fine with that one, which is with the Property Development Fund, I think that includes, can include the hospital at present as well in terms of a building-related hospital thing. Is that correct, Jody?
But I'm not, if I may, I'm not just thinking of building maintenance. It could be used for programs if we left the language more open.
Roger.
Eric?
Oh, go ahead.
And honestly, on that regard, I, I feel the same way. I would prefer it not being used at all for building maintenance, at least at the half that we decided to elect to, to give toward the mental health and, you know, drug rehabilitation needs. I think that that would be, I feel that that, it sounded like Marge kind of meant this to be used as for like the treatment of addiction problems, you know, be it whatever drug. And I feel that that would be the good, good usage of the money is toward those who are afflicted with these, these issues, as opposed to like the creation of a new facility, you know, at least with the half of that. I don't know, it's tricky.
So up to half of it?
Yeah, up to half of it.
Did we get a second on this motion of Cindy's?
Not yet, no.
Second, please.
Second, please.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
Sorry, that would not happen a while back.
That's right.
Back on to the discussion here, then, that was my mistake, so still, in my opinion, we'll just accept the discussion we've had already. Nancy, do you have?
Yeah, I'm not in favor of designating it for any, anything, and I really don't think we need to address alcohol abuse since the issue of opting out of alcohol sales hasn't even come up, so can't be one way for one substance and another way for another substance. But if the money goes to the Property Development Fund and can be used for something else, then I think it should just go to the Property Development Fund and, as it might be needed, doled out to other, for other uses.
If I may, and that's why I said up to 50%. It gives us some flexibility at the time of budgeting to decide what the highest priority is and where we need to use those funds.
Two things. From hearing you write, Member Logadakis, give us more discretion for the money.
Right.
As a pigeonhole, fair enough. Secondly, I think in the broader sense of this ordinance, with both state and federal monies being less for Petersburg, this gives us a great opportunity to pull our own weight, start raising money to help for many projects, healthcare, I mean, we all know, there's many. So this could help us in a lot of ways moving forward, and I think it's a sound ordinance.
Any other discussion?
So in essence, this ordinance is just to be able to raise money to directly benefit our community, and, and as it's written right now, it, we don't have a whole lot of limitations on how it could be, be used. Or is there a Property Development Fund existing?
Yes.
Yes, there is, and it's, for example, we use some of that money for the rehab of the municipal police department building. So, and we have a current budget policy that, is it half, Jenny? Half of the, if there is a general fund surplus at the end of the year, half of that surplus, as long as we continue to be above our minimums, is deposited into the Property Development Fund. So it's a way to, in a sense, fund depreciation. It's not directly the same amount, but that's, that's kind of the intent. The other thing I just wanted to add is, so everybody's clear, we're going through with the ordinance because we don't know what'll happen with the initiative, the vote on the initiative. If the initiative fails in the sense of, of that folks vote to ban commercial act sales, this ordinance can still stay on the books, but it will not be active from a standpoint of collections.
I was going to bring that up. Thanks, Steve. So, well, basically what Member Logadakis wants to do is just add the wording under Section 4.70.150, the use of proceeds to allow up to 50% of the money to be used for treatment or purposes, or?
How, I, what I, the words I used were health-related purposes, so that gives us some flexibility.
All right, so that is the wording we'll be voting on in this amendment. So any other discussion on the amendment? Clerk call the roll.
Nancy?
No.
Mark?
Yes.
Kurt? Oops, sorry. Cindy?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Okay, that amendment to this ordinance, 2016-11, under that section of proceeds passes four to one with Member Strand opposed. And now that brings us back to the main motion, voting on Ordinance 2016-11 as amended. Is there any more discussion on the main motion? Clerk call the roll.
Cindy?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Nancy?
Is, now are, we're voting on the whole thing with the amendment?
Correct.
Okay, no.
Mark?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Okay, Ordinance 2016-11 passes in its first reading, and like the clerk was saying, at the next reading of this ordinance, we'll have information from our attorney, and then we'll also have the public hearing. Next item on the agenda is Resolution 2016-21. This is a resolution of the Petersburg Borough authorizing the Borough to issue general obligation refunding bonds in the principal amount of not to exceed $550,000 to refund certain outstanding general obligation refunding bonds of the former city of Petersburg, Alaska, and fixing certain details of such bonds and authorizing their sale. Entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
I'll move.
Second.
Second.
Okay. A motion been made by Member Strand, seconded by Member Castro, to adopt Resolution 2016-11. And like the manager stated earlier, this is basically just a refinancing thing, and it'll save us up to 10 percent. So, is there any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Jay?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Resolution 2016-21 passes unanimously. Excuse me. The next item on the agenda is Resolution 2016-22. That's a resolution of the Petersburg Borough authorizing the borough to issue general obligation refunding bonds in the principal amount not to exceed $800,000 to refund certain outstanding general obligation school bonds of the former city of Petersburg, Alaska, and fixing certain details of such bonds and authorizing their sale. That entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
I so moved.
For second.
Second.
Motion's been made by Member Lagadakis, seconded by Member Greger, to adopt Resolution 2016-22. Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mark?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
That resolution passes unanimously as well, and that moves us on to an authorization to enter into a professional services contract for skilled labor services for concrete work on the wastewater, compost, and septic receiving project. I'd entertain a motion to authorize that project.
I so moved. I'll second.
Moved by Member Greger, seconded by Member Lagadakis, to authorize the services contract. And the contract is, let's see, Assistant Public Works Director Cotta is recommending to enter into a professional services contract with Rainforest Contracting, INC., or Inc., for an amount not to exceed $60,000 to complete complex concrete work for the wastewater, compost, and septic receiving project. Any discussion or questions?
I just wanted to acknowledge Chris's effort and Carl's effort in putting this together. I know they've worked really hard on it, and I appreciate the time that you took in allowing us to tour the facility. Eric and I got to walk through that a few months ago, so I'm excited to see this coming together.
Okay. Any other discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Nancy?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Okay, we have authorized that contract. The next is Item E, 16-223, Approval of Letter to Alaska Mental Health Trust Authority and the U.S. Forest Service Supporting Alaska Mental Health Trust Land Exchange Act of 2016. I would entertain a motion to approve that letter.
So, move.
For second.
Second.
Motion's been made by Member Strand, seconded by Member Greger, to approve the letter to mental health. Discussion. I think we have some ideas here.
We do. I appreciated Becky Knight's testimony, and I would like to amend the letter to add the possibility of an endowment as a Plan B option, but keeping the main focus of pursuing the land exchange, if that would possibly play out.
So, you're wanting to add to the letter what you just stated, but to keep it... keep the impetus of the letter like it is with a backup plan?
That's correct.
Okay. So, we'll take that as a form of the motion. We need a second. Change the letter.
I'll second that.
Okay. So, Debbie, do you kind of have the wording?
I meant to add possibility of an endowment as a Plan B option. So, yeah, I think I can...
If the land exchange fails.
If, if, yes.
Yeah. And also, to add to the letter, where we're gonna try to find the document assessing the slopes and send that or put that in it as well, and then maybe note the slides that have occurred in the recent past in that area. Do we do that?
Yeah, and also...
Suggested by Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Please.
There was one other change, if possible, and I think that the letter should also be CC'd to Senator Dan Sullivan and also sent to the Ketchikan Gateway Borough.
Okay. Let's see, no harm in that. So, do you have the changes listed, kind of, sort of?
I do.
Okay. So, is everybody on the right page here? We're gonna amend the letter as it's in the agenda? Will the clerk call the roll?
Nancy?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Okay, the changes to the letter have been made, and we'll send that out to the appropriate parties. Next item, 16-228, Item F, is Authorization for Mayor Jensen to Accept for Public Use and for Public Purposes the Real Property Dedicated to the Public for the Mallard East and West Subdivision, including easements, rightaways, alleys, and roadways. Entertain a motion for that authorization.
So, moved.
For second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Member Greger, seconded by Member Castro, to accept this, and this is land proposed for a subdivision, I believe, from Petersburg Mental Health... or not mental, but for the Alaska Mental Health?
Correct.
And there is a note here. I'll read it. Let me back up a minute. The State of Alaska Department of Natural Resources requires borough mayors to sign for acceptance of any land dedicated for public use and for public purposes within the borough, regardless of whether or not the borough has platting authority in that area. This land dedication is in the area of Nine Mile Bitkoff Highway, which is currently exempt from platting authority. Acceptance of lands for public use or public purposes does not obligate the public or any governing body to construct, operate, or maintain improvements. The plat has been reviewed by Electrical Superintendent Nelson, Assistant Public Works Director Cotta, and Community and Economic Development Director Cabrera. Nelson and Cotta are comfortable with the subdivision as it is drawn. Cabrera's comments are attached. Now, I'll read those. Mayor Jensen will need Assembly authorization to sign the plat of the Ramstead-Homestead Division. Is this called the Ramstead-Ho... That's missed.
I think I forgot to change the name. I'm sorry.
That is from Point Agassy, right? I thought that was...
Yes. It's... What is it called?
Mallard?
A mallard.
Mallard.
Mallard, yes. Sorry about that.
Okay, so we need to just change the wording there at the end of it to Mallard Subdivision. And the concerns of Liz Cabrera, my comments are, the subdivision is located outside the municipal water-s sewer service area. Several of the lots on Block 2 are less than one acre in size and some less than half an acre in size. The size makes it difficult for the lot owner to develop the property and provide sufficient land for a drain field for their septic system, as well as mitigation, if needed, for the core permit. These concerns were relayed previously to Mental Health Trust and DNR during development of the subdivision. So, I just thought I'd add that information. Is there any other input from the Assembly? Nancy?
I'm leery of, even if we never sold it as lots, owning something that isn't big enough to put a drain field in or near enough to connect to sewer and water. If somebody puts a drain field on their half-acre lot, I would think that the owners on either side would be alarmed.
Yeah, I'm not... So, this is land that would... Currently is not on the tax roll, Steve. Is that correct? This is land that's not on the tax rolls and could be if there were... If we agreed to this, then they could put them up for sale, correct?
Correct. And this is one of these... We debated it internally before, you know, what do we want to set the stage? Because we want these on the tax roll. I mean, when that happens, suddenly the borough can, you know, max... We can maximize our property tax revenue from the standpoint of that. The challenge is, the state, you know, will approve it regardless of whether you sign this or not. And did the Assembly really want to go on record on a couple of these lots where they're too small and would pose problems for people that own surrounding property, particularly down slope? So, you know, we're in the process of building a system where, when these things come through, the group of people you referred to are gonna sign off and provide comments, still doesn't really answer the question of, should the Assembly sign it or not? And what's the ramifications if you don't? I mean, at this point, we assume DNR will go ahead and move forward, even if you don't sign it. We were kind of thinking, does the Assembly want to have a protest vote, so to speak, by saying, "Look, you haven't designed this well." Particularly those three smaller lots, they could've lumped into one lot and maybe mitigated some of this, although all three of them, I think, are so steep, it'd be pretty difficult to build on regardless. So, it's... We just don't really know what the Assembly wants to do. When you come across this kind of stuff, do we want to raise the issue, or do we want to just say whatever, mental health, do whatever you want to do?
Nancy?
Liz, did I say it any... Can I say it any better way?
If we take this over, can we redo those lots, or do we have to stay with this platting?
They're platted. I mean, this is... Will be platted by the state, fact they already have, and Mental Health, at some point, will put them up for sale, and they'll be sold or not, based on buyer interest.
Cindy?
So, my understanding of these is, we do not have platting authority for these, so we cannot design these lots. Just want to put the plug in there. If we had zoning outside of Service Area 1, we could, in some measure, address this issue, but we do not.
Correct.
So, our choice is to go along with Mental Health or to not go along with Mental Health, it probably won't change what they choose to do.
Yeah.
So, it sounds like, irregardless, they will sell the lots anyway.
That's our belief. And, you know, from our perspective, it'd kind of be nice if we're on the record saying, you know, Mental Health didn't do this right. So, some buyer down the road suddenly shows up who buys it from, I don't know, California, sight unseen, shows up to actually build it and realize that they can't, they don't come running to the borough, we can say, "Well, we tried to tell them," you know. Again, not that that matters to anybody. Mental Health, I don't think cares.
Doesn't seem like it would be a bad thing to make that statement on record, though.
I... Again, that's an Assembly-level call.
Well, these are just lots that get transferred right to the owner. We never take ownership of these.
No, no. These will be put up in a bid, auction, however Mental Health chooses to... And, you know, we love them on the tax roll, don't get me wrong. The problem is, is that they're... Particularly those three lots, they're putting it... They're developing it in a way that anybody are likely not to buy them. So, they'll sit there in Mental Health ownership forever. It'd be to Mental Health's benefit to do a better job. They don't seem to have that same take on the issue.
Cindy?
As I recall, looking over the plat with borough staff, there was also an issue of access, and the roads were not put in there in a way that was ideal. And I don't know if they replatted it, if there would be an opportunity, because it's steep, but there's... There are some additional issues with these properties as well.
Yeah, they basically have said that they're not gonna allow any access directly from any of these lots to Mitkoff Highway. So, they've shown an easement, a road that goes behind all the lots on both sides, and are not gonna allow anybody who buys those lots to cut a driveway directly to Mitkoff. Again, you know, very clear, we do not have platting authority. We would like it. That's a controversial issue. I mean, I think even among some of the Assembly members. There's no guarantee that Mental Health would listen to us, even if we had platting authority. Be honest with you.
Okay. So, just a point of clarification, really, the signature they're asking for from the mayor is totally irrelevant.
We believe that's the case, yes.
Thank you. Yeah.
So, I don't understand why they're offering it to the mayor to accept for public uses if they're gonna maintain control over what happens to it, the size of the lots and what happens to it.
Liz, can you explain the procedure?
All of it.
It sounds confusing, yeah.
So, there are public easements on the plat, and that's the only part that they're asking for the mayor to sign so that Petersburg, as a public entity, says, "Yes, we accept these for public uses." Basically, they were told by their attorney that they've been doing it wrong all these years, and that if the... If the state approves any plats within a municipality, regardless of that municipality has platting authority, that they should be getting the local government to accept the public easements and rightaways. They... I don't think they answered the question of what happens if we don't sign, right? We asked that question.
I did. I did ask that question directly of the head platting dude for the state. And he said, "I don't know what will happen, but I can tell you, DNR will most likely approve the plat." So, I asked, "So, if we don't sign it and accept the dedication, and instead we send in a letter saying why we didn't sign it, because we're unhappy with the size of the lots, blah, 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 whatever it is, will that be recorded with the plat?" And he said, "No, our letter would not be recorded with the plat, but it would go in their file."
So, if we did send this letter to accepting this, those lots are too small. We have no authority on telling people they can't build on it anyway, without a drain field or sewer system anyway, right? Because it's outside of Service Area 1?
If it was inside of Service Area 1, what we would ask is for them to get a DEC permit. And that... And I think everyone outside of Service Area 1 also is supposed to get a DEC permit, but we don't check on that because it's outside of Service Area 1.
Under our authority.
And, you know, it's not to say that someone potentially couldn't develop those lots. We just think it would be really, potentially, very expensive, because you might have to engineer a system that's, you know, engineered to the nth degree versus what most people engineer to when they have a decent-sized lot, so...
No, that... Question about that. So, if we approve this, and someone bought one of the smaller lots, they would have to meet state standards for a drain field?
They should, yeah. They should get a DEC permit.
Who enforces that, DEC?
DEC is supposed to enforce that.
I don't see where... Yeah, I don't know.
I'm looking at this plat, and it looks like they're all along... All of them are on along Mitkoff Highway, so how come they aren't accessible from Mitkoff Highway?
Chris, can you answer that?
I cannot, but I suspect...
Can you hear him all right, Joel?
Yeah.
So, this is why you gave us this can of worms, isn't it?
Yeah. I can't answer what process they went through to deny access to the highway. However, what I noticed when I walked the lots is that, you know, there's a curve in the road right there, and the embankment for the highway drops down pretty steep before it flattens out. So, you'd be... It'd almost be like a double-blind, you know, you'd be coming up a hill and onto a curve. So, it probably wouldn't be the greatest way to try and get access there. There's a... If you go downhill from the highway, there's already a driveway established on part of the platted road there. You know, it's... There's probably accesses two or three of those lots, and then, you know, if you wanted to get access to the ones furthest north, you'd have to extend that driveway. that driveway.
So these lots, in the, they're south or farther out Mitkoff Highway than Hupp's?
They're right there. They're, they're north of, of Hupp's.
Right on Hupp's. Oh, they're north of Hupp's, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, if you go, if you go, you know, that driveway just before Hupp's place goes down to where Larry Martin lives down there, yeah, you go down that, and, you know, the first road off to the right is that, that driveway they show on the plat, and so, you know, those lots, you know, they lay between the highway and that driveway that's already established there. But not, that driveway doesn't access all of those lots. It ends, I would say, two or three lots in is where the, the end of it is now.
So if, if they can't access the highway with a driveway, they'll be parking along the highway and walking into their...
Well, I, I think if you were going to develop, you know, one of the, one of the lots that's already served by the, the road that's there now, you'd just, you'd just punch in a driveway off of that, you know, existing, I call it a driveway or service road or whatever.
Well, all of these lots would have one access point onto the highway.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, right here, the driveway, and then what they're talking about is a, that easement all the way around the back of those on that side.
Swords and arrows.
Yeah, and then over here, along the highway, for those. And I, I'm not sure on these three. But that's, that's... Sure about those. This here was coming down, this here, and then cutting a, an easement all the way across the back.
And so that road is between the, end of the lots and the beach?
I think there's more lots down here.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've done numbers.
Some of these have, are developed already, yeah. Yeah.
And that was one of the considerations, you know, if you've got steep slopes, small lots, and people living down here, they're truly downhill, and I can't get into the dynamics of that statement, but stuff does go downhill.
In short, Mr. Manager, you feel like those, especially the short ones, were very poorly designed?
Yeah, I think, I think they are. I mean, granted, we don't really have a site, so it's a question of, do we want to get in the habit of making statements about this kind of stuff or not until we have platting authority, or do you just want to stay out of it?
Well, we already have on one subdivision, one over Point Agassy. We've accepted the same basics thing, but with a different design.
Totally different design and, and well-done in the sense of size of the lots. I mean, I think the biggest issue here was size of lots compared to slope of the ground, and, you know, would they be, would they be, I mean, you know, Liz's job in some ways is to maximize our property tax revenue. So when we go to look at plans, that's one of the first things we're supposed to do. Does this maximize the revenue value of that piece of property? So if it was, if we had platting authority, we would have said no to this because we don't think it's maximizing that value, because those lots are not done correctly. If you apply that same logic to this, that's what we do, where we really don't have platting authority. So what we're saying is, do you want to weigh in on this stuff? Or just say, "No, fine, we'll sign it, and we'll deal with that someday down the road."
Is, is this some of the land that Mental Health is going to log up, up the hill from, or?
I don't think so.
Where is it on this? Is it out here further?
Have you seen this map? They may know more about what...
I think on the other side of the road, it's, it's quite a bit flatter than it is on the downhill side.
Ed Wood, I haven't really seen that map, but if it's out by Jeff's place, it's not our area of concern.
Farther out the road, this is.
Thank you very much.
I guess it's just a policy that we're looking at here, whether we want to start accepting stuff like this, if it's, in our opinion, poorly designed or not. I mean, seems to be like if the lots are too small, they're not going to sell.
It also seems to me that if we accept it, it's like giving approval to it.
So anyway, if we, I think I understand what we're voting on.
Liz, do you have a recommendation on something like this? I mean, for the Assembly? I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but, because, I mean, the reason I ask that, say that, is because Liz and her staff has to deal with the ramifications of this stuff. People, even if we don't have platting authority, she's the first stop they go to when they run into a problem like this. And what can the borough do to help us fix this? I mean, that's, even if we don't have platting authority, even if it's, it's been existing for a long time, a new owner shows up, that's where they go. They go and talk to her, and they say, "What's the borough going to do to fix this problem?"
Nothing, you're outside the zone.
And, you know, we don't tend to chase away potential new buyers, even if they're outside of Service Area One. I mean, we kind of want people to move here and build houses. So we end up having to help them through. It's one of the reasons why I brought this whole issue up on these, was in the long run, we end up with a problem anyway. Because somebody does eventually buy it, tries to go build a house, and goes, "Oops," and then comes running to Liz and say, "What can you do? Because the lots are too small, because we have to mitigate two-thirds of our lot, and that only, doesn't give us enough room to build." If we would have known that, we would have never bought it. I mean, that's, that's the kind of, okay. What do you think?
Thanks for describing that, yeah. I think if someone did look at that, I would hope that they would consider buying more than one of those little lots together, that, you know, they would do some due diligence. So that would be one thing that would help. And then, that, you know, I think they are probably going to spend, get a system in place that... It's, it's going to force people to spend potentially a lot of extra money on something that they shouldn't, whether that tips it over to the point where they can't develop it, you know, I can't necessarily answer that.
Somebody recommend?
Sorry, that's all right. Okay. And then Eric.
Well, obviously your decision, but personally, I think it was unfortunate that Mental Health didn't want to hear what we told them many months ago when they came to visit, that these lots should be bigger. And the state doesn't want to own up to the responsibility that they're allowing people to create lots this size when they know that that's probably not adequate in our part of the, in our neck of the woods to deal with the issues of sanitation. So, you know, being a rabble-rouser, I would just be like, "No, I mean, we're not taking this." So that's my recommendation.
Thank you, Liz. Eric, you had a comment, a question?
Yes, so it kind of sounds like if we're thinking about the new potential residents and them having to make adjustments to their sale in order to be able to, to live on that property, you know, it sounds like that's going to be an issue. But then I feel the biggest issue for the borough is the, the current borough residents who live downstream from that. If, you know, we'd be infringing on, on those local residents' rights for clean water. And then we would be, instead of the borough being able to be held responsible for that, we're, we're holding like the owner and DEC responsible for their compliance with environmental water quality. So I feel that, that this would be a bad, bad issue, especially with those three properties in particular, and that it could, it could infringe on the rights of current borough citizens.
Additionally, wouldn't the property tax on a lot that can't be developed or pissed upon be negligible anyway?
Generally, if you have a lot that is less than ideal and less buildable, the value of that lot is, is less, so we're going to receive less in property taxes, correct?
Sounds to me like either way, we approve it or the letter or not, or accept the lands for public use or authorize this, we're still, there's probably still going to be sold, we're going to get property taxes anyway. So looking at it monetarily, we don't like this design, maybe we shouldn't approve it. Anyway, that's my last two cents. So, time for a vote. Clerk call a roll.
So the motion is to approve?
Has to be a positive, yes.
Okay. Cindy?
No.
Jay?
No.
Eric?
No.
Mark?
No.
Nancy?
No.
Well, that took a long time to come up with that.
Would you like me to send them a narrative as to why?
Yes, please.
Okay, will do.
Thank you. Now where are we? Those...
Back on target.
Communications, that's all right, it's something we have to address. There is nothing listed under communications. Anybody have any communications they would like to report? Okay, seeing none. Assembly discussion items, is there any recognitions? There's none listed on the agenda. Cindy?
I have three. And the first one is a shout-out to Sergeant Randy Holmgren, that grant amount total, the $272,000-plus dollars that he has been able to get. I'm really appreciative that, of those efforts, and think that those kinds of things are really going to be helping us in the future, as we know budgets are going to be going down, so I wanted to acknowledge that. I also, just as a note, understand that we've got a substantial grant to carry them through for the next few years. We, of course, agreed to pay them the $75,000 to carry them through, hoping that that grant would happen, and it has. So I'm really excited that we were able to help facilitate that and that they will be functioning, and I think they actually will be able to have a little bit more staff as well, so I'm sure they'll share more details of that soon. And the last thing that I wanted to mention is, Melina Marvin has been really pushing to increase voter turnout, and I want to encourage everybody and continue to encourage everybody to register to vote and to vote in the upcoming election. It is the one best way to let the legislature know that we are paying attention to what they are and are not doing, and we would love to see a record turnout in October.
Okay, any other recognitions? Nancy?
I'd like to recognize Cindy on her birthday.
We don't have to sing, do we?
This ensures we don't have to sing.
And I appreciate, I vote for that.
Me too. Okay, we're moving on to the next item on the agenda. Cooperoff, Papke's Landing, and Entrance Island docks, is there any discussion on that? I'm sure we'll be having a lot of discussion when we start taking a position on it in October after the election. So I have nothing more to say about it.
Just as a side note, we haven't received any more answers to our questionnaire since the last meeting, so that was August 15th.
Would there be a way to summarize?
We have that.
Okay, all those, thank you. I thought we'd asked that before. Nancy?
I'd like to point out that the last input we got was that the Entrance Island float is underwater at the present time.
Yeah, that was conveyed to us by some locals that traveled from Juneau and tried to tie up, but no room at the dock, and it was a wash, basically, but the state knows that.
But everybody wears boots, so that makes it okay.
That's what Mike Luksen said from the state. So anyway, next item, under Assembly Discussion Items is marijuana. Is there any new discussion on that issue? Guess that'll be coming to a vote in October. Hospital remodel and new facility, any discussion on that? I'm sure that'll be brought to the forefront at some point. I've seen none, no discussion on those items. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. All of the favors, say aye.
Aye.